Advisory Committee for the City of Lowell for our regular meeting on Monday, June 13th, 2022, as of now. Please rise for the Fledgling Legions.
Fledgling Legions, to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioners Schwabben.
Here.
Commissioners Catwalder, Ellis, and Gadula are all absent, and Chair Barker.
Here. And do I have a motion to excuse the three commissioners?
I'll make that motion.
And second? And support? Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Stand excused. Do I have a motion for approval of amendments in the previous meeting, May 9th, 2022, our regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll support.
And discussion? Sue, roll call, both, please.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioners Schwabben.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Going to stand approved. Are there any public comments or communications concerning items not on the agenda? The items not on the agenda. Hearing done, and we will continue then. Old business, there are none. New business. We have a public hearing for the Scooters' special land use. And it is a public hearing. And is...
Commissioner Burke, I mean Chair Barker, I'm sorry. Did you approve the agenda as written?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Who made that motion?
Marty and Colin seconded it.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, not a problem. So, for the Scooters' coffee, is Crisanda Lippert here, please? Or is Holton for her?
I am.
Yeah, please.
Up here, please, Crisanda, if you would, and give us your name and your address.
Here.
Yeah, right here. Yep, that way we can record it.
You're okay, we don't mind.
No. We understand well.
Um, Crisanda Lippert, and what else?
Uh, your address.
Twenty-nine fifty Dean Parkway in Minneapolis. Five four one six.
Thank you. And just brief five minutes, kind of describe what you want to do with your site plan, and you're, you know, how you're going to do it, and all those kinds of things. Just briefly.
Okay. Um, so Scooters, um, the routes are in a drive-through, so it's drive-through only, vehicular traffic, non-estream. It's a small, six-hundred-and-seventy-inch square foot building, no sprinkler, um, no wood. The mission of Scooters is be amazing every day, so that kind of carries through in both customer service and in the interaction between our teams and everybody. And the other mission is speed of service. So, um, the drive-through, the customers that come in should pick up their coffee, get from the ordering window or the menu board, I should say, not the window, to the window to pick up and to drive out in less than five, or three minutes. I'm sorry. Again, not my forte. So, the speed of service is very real. I don't know how Scooters came up with this and how they figured it out, but it is. So, we are now one of those, where you see cars skewed all over the place. They serve single-source coffee, so the beans are, you know, resourced and bring them back. They're roasted in our facility in Omaha. What's also becoming a little bit legendary is the cinnamon buns that they make in their facility also in Omaha, so when I went to get scooterized, it was a beautiful aroma of confidence in the buns. I don't know what gets better than that, but that is the two things that they are. The coffee is wonderful. They do, um, they do have other, they have smoothies and tea and seasonal drinks. I think there was a time, maybe still, that they were doing some red bull drinks. So, you know, pretty full, limited menu, heat and serve, so heated and goes out the window in the same packaging, but breakfast sandwiches and normal sandwiches. Ours are, you know, depends on the location, but six-two, six-seven, maybe nine-ish, nothing too crazy. And I think, I think that's it. I know that was probably pretty abbreviated, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
That's fine, we will go from here. Commissioners, any question, Crisanda? And?
I have, um, actually two questions. One, last month, we had talked about the rezoning of the property from industrial to C3, and I don't know if that has officially gone through City Council or been approved?
It's going next meeting.
Okay, so we can approve this based on that coming next, okay? My second is, um, the curb cut situation that you have, um, the potential curb cut. Have you figured out what you...
We are not actually adding a curb cut. We're working with this gentleman back here to develop a cross-access, or not, well, I guess it would be a cross-access easement, but an access easement nonetheless. So, that's what we're working on right now. The DOT would certainly not allow three curb cuts very close together there, so that's what we're working on right now. And one thing, um, that I did have that you don't have, um, and this obviously isn't very visible, but it is something that we had been working on, and it did not get into the packet that you have, but we were not utilizing the full length of the site before. So, your site plan shows six cars with a potential for ten by elongating the site, and I have printed these at the hotel, so I have three copies if you want to pass them around, but I can certainly email them as well. But this site, this, um, site plan, which elongates the interior of the donut, if you will, allows for eighteen cars, which with the speed of service that Scooters has, will likely not happen, especially, you know, in a town of this size. This is more, um, and maybe, well, maybe we'll be very lucky and there'll be eighteen cars, but I, even in our busiest, um, cities, we don't typically stack that much, just because we move them through so quickly, but this does show the capacity for eighteen cars to be stacked. So, I'm not sure, um, again, I apologize, um, this was something that we've been working on and trying to figure out, and we just didn't get it into the package, so happy to answer any questions on that, or email, share the, what I do have.
Crisanda, why don't you give a copy to Andy?
Yes, I've got two more. Had to make the manager to print this for me, but, and they're small. And it's not, it's not a full site plan either, it's simply to show what we will be for both. And otherwise, it's exactly the same kind of stuff.
Commissioners, do you need to see it, or just to answer that, fine?
No, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Crisanda.
Yes.
What I'd like to do is open the public hearing at this point, and I would also like to call the owner, manager of D and D Trucking.
Yeah.
To the stand, please. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
We'll holler at you if we need more.
Thank you.
Thanks. Same thing, name and address, please.
Dean Lonik, I live in Cascade, and represent West Main and D and D Trucking.
Okay. Dean, I guess my question is, tie into your entranceway there, where do you stand on this?
It would not be accurate to say it's a sure thing.
Okay. Is there any timeframe, I guess, from your standpoint?
There's not.
There's not? I assume there has been some active conversation at least.
I've called them preliminary conversations.
Commissioners, any other? Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, Dean.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, we're faced with the possibility here of going through the entire site plan and not having resolution on the entranceway. And we certainly don't have it tonight, quite obviously. My thought pattern at this point would be to postpone it until they do have it, which time we reschedule them and go from there.
Well, if they're in, if they're having discussion on that, I don't see, even if they, if it fails, we can make that part of our conditions, but then we need to come back and wait for MDOT's response.
Right.
Right? And that way, then, they at least have an understanding that, yep, they, if we so desire, that they can get materials ordered and start it coming, because time is really the essence for all construction, so I almost would just assume we went through it, we did it, and we put the entrance part into a condition. We can do that, right, Andy?
Yes.
The only, the only problem with that is, is we spend the next forty-five minutes going through something that may or may not happen. And Dean, in his, uh, discussion with us the last time we met, indicated that he was not thrilled with that becoming a commercial establishment instead of industrial. So, I'm not sure where that discussion is going to go, and where does it, you know, lead us, and what are we out if we wait until they resolve the situation? I mean, it may not be resolved for three or four months.
Have you, where'd you go? Have you had discussion with the bank about creating a easement across their property?
So, the problem with that is that they have a write-in, write-out, so there are access that we would share, um, and that would not work for us, because it would cut in half the ability of the customers to go into the, into the property. We did, I mean, we certainly would have done so had that, and that, being as it's a DOT road, and we've talked to the DOT too, um, so being as it's a DOT road, that can't change. Did you want me to...
No, you're...
Okay. So, yeah, so since they have a write-in, write-out, that won't change, especially because it's so close to Dean's access point. If anything, they would, I mean, it's, I kind of feel like it's grandfathered in, because those are two, three separate parcels, so they certainly won't let another one in, and if we try to get them to redo the one that is there, you know, it just, it won't be...
Okay. And would you, would you be willing to come back next one? And have issues resolved?
Absolutely.
Okay, there you go.
And, Crisanda, if you want to do it by Zoom, that's, that's fine, too, like you did the last time, I mean, it's not, we're not going to prosecute you or anything here, but if that would make life easier, I, I, my thought pattern is, is why take forty-five minutes of our time, or an hour, discussing your, your full plan? And this also gives Andy time to incorporate your new scheme here.
Oh, sure, that's good.
For one more thing, and we can handle it by, by Zoom, once the issue is resolved. I mean, without that issue being resolved, we have, you know, there's nothing for us to do. I mean, that's, that's the reality of it, so. I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. Commissioners, let's, let's put it off, and we will let Andy take charge as far as when he gets their thing, that's one of the schedules. Do we need, do we need ten days to notice, or...
No, we won't have to, we won't have to re-notice it. So, there is, I guess, there's sort of three issues that are kind of floating out there that haven't been, haven't been resolved. One is the rezoning, which I don't have significant reservations about that at this time. Second one is the driveway, which we know is a concern. There's also an issue with, with the way that the stormwater is proposed on the site, so we had our engineering staff look at this. This shows the stormwater from the site draining into, um, M21, which also requires an MDOT permit. And with this drawing that Crisanda provided now that shows the eighteen spaces, this is different from what is in the rest of the site plan, because it basically just takes this island, it's in the middle here, that is island, and just stretches it out, so it occupies the entire parcel. So, this is a change in the overall layout of the property to add to purview service, because we have more drainage, so the stormwater, you know, calculation is going to have to be resolved, so I think those are sort of the three issues that they will need to, to sort of adjust between now and then. One, some, some resolution on the driveway. Two, if they're going to drain into the MDOT right-of-way, you know, have at least proof of concept in terms of an MDOT permit, or some sort of preliminary approval from them, that this would be acceptable. And then, third, by then, we will know if the rezoning was approved by council, and I would, at this point, expect that it would be. But with, this is one where, um, because there's so much uncertainty specifically surrounding the driveway, I think it's prudent to have as many of those questions answered prior to making a decision, because once you go through the standards, if you, you know, find that it, that it meets the standards, it kind of blocks you into an approval, and I don't want to have the many commissions to try and walk that back. You know, at the next meeting, if, if, if something changes, or I think before we go through the standards, um, it's, I agree that it's probably best to wait for now. Hopefully, we'll have this figured out for the next meeting, we'll have answers, we'll have things resolved, and then, um, if, if they're back, kind of have it worked out, then it should be a simple review, and if not, then, you know, we'll kind of see where it goes from there.
And you'll be working with them to get those answers, right?
Yeah, so I've already talked to MDOTs on both of those issues, um, so, yeah, I think that, that those should be resolved, and I can't, you know, I mean, as far as the driveway goes with D and D Trucking, that's up to the applicant, Dean, and that's, they can deal with that however they want, but insofar as it involves cities zoning, or the, or the stormwater calculations and stuff like that, and MDOT, I guess we can facilitate those conversations to the extent that it makes sense for us to do so.
And could we just store these here at the city?
Yes, although...
I mean, I know you're going to be changing some things on here, but I don't mind just having a single sheet, so printing all of these out.
Yeah, so they could probably just, I mean, assuming that the rest of the layout and the landscaping and all that is largely the same, they could probably send over like a, you know, eleven-by-seventeen size for your review. We'll, of course, get the large ones and plot them in the office and take that work detail, but, yeah, if you're going to keep those here, that's fine.
Let's just store these here, and then we'll have them available soon when the next meeting comes, and that way we won't, they won't have to redo, you know, a huge packet. Commissioners, is that fine with you, that we'll let Andy notify us if they're ready for our July, what is that, 11th meeting, I guess it is? And then go from there? I mean, there's just too many variables here, one, any one of which could literally pull, you know, pull it out of water, and I, I just don't see us wasting that kind of time on today. Okay? All right. Thank you. Sue, do we, we don't need to vote on it, do we?
A motion to postpone a decision on that would probably be appropriate, so it's clearly made, it's what was decided.
I'll make a motion to postpone any decision on the Scooters' special land use. Is there a second?
Support?
And any discussion? Sue, voice call, please.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioners Schwabben.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, folks, appreciate it. The next one is a public hearing for 139 South Broadway and 149 South Broadway, King Milling additions. And again, it's a public hearing, I'll introduce our, introduce the public hearing after we hear from...
This is just a site plan, I think, it's not a hearing.
Such a public, such a public hearing.
Did we notice this during hearing? No, I think we did.
We noticed the variance, I think this is just a site plan, but it's fairly acceptable comments.
Okay.
Okay.
So, this is going to come back?
We'll explain the process in a minute.
So, uh, King Milling additions, site plan review. And Jim, you want to give us a brief outline on what you're doing? Name and address, please.
Jim Doyle, King Milling Company, now at 222 West Main Street, 115 South Broadway. So, yeah, we are experiencing growth once again, a good problem to have. We have a number of customers that are adding product capacity to their bakeries and fruit plants. We've seen some release relative to the pandemic and changes in eating habits. So, we, we are really maxed out twenty-four-seven, and can't make enough flour, and so we want to continue to grow, continue to build, so we're looking at building a, another flower mill south of railroad tracks on Broadway Street. And this plant would make seventy-five hundred hundred weights of flour a day. And incorporated in the milling structure itself is some grain storage, concrete grain storage is part of that. Because with the milling, we need a little bit more grain storage capacity as well. So, that's kind of what we're doing, and, you know, we have Paul Henderson here from the Los Dean and Associates, Doyle, and Doyle here, too, so if there are any other questions that may come up certainly in the review, we've got a team of people here that I think can answer them for you.
Thank you. And we'll follow the same routine as far as what we have done in the past. Any questions from the commissioners? And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you're going before the City Council on Monday?
Yeah, they're, they're going City Council for their variants, for their variants and then their abatement.
So, oh, you're doing both at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners, before we turn it over? Thanks, Jim. Are there any questions from the public at this point? We'll follow a public hearing type, so if there are questions, just simply let the, let, let me know, and we'll go from there, okay? Andy, you want to spark us through it?
Yeah. Thank you. So, um, as you mentioned, this is a modification to an existing building that's on the east side of Broadway, south of the railroad track. All of these surrounding properties owned by King Milling, and they're proposing to add this proposed mill building and silos, which would be about seventy-eight hundred square feet on the west side of that building. There's also a proposed truck loadout on the north side, tied between the existing building and the railroad track. Those are the two main buildings proposed for the property. This is a fairly straightforward review. What complicates it a little bit in terms of procedure is the location of the proposed mill building and silos. So, this property, this little area, as you know, is zoned industrial, and that requires a fifty-foot front yard setback. This is kind of an odd-shaped parcel, but it does only have one street frontage, which is Broadway, and so that is your whole front yard, so the way the ordinance is written, and the way that this parcel lays out, everything has to be set back, all buildings have to be set back a minimum of fifty feet from Broadway. As you can see from the site plan, they are about seven feet, shade under seven feet away from, from the Broadway's to your right-of-way, which is the sidewalk, pretty much, and so they would need a variance in order to build this. Ordinarily, what we would do is tell them to not come to the planning commission until that variance has been obtained. Reason why we recommend that is because if the planning commission approves something subject to a variance being granted, anything other than granting the exact variance they are seeking, means you're going to have to come back here in any ways, because they're going to have to adjust the site plan, and what the planning commission approves will have been different, so it's, it's a, it's a risk that often wastes a lot of time, because a lot of times at ZDA meetings, there's some, you know, back and forth that goes on, and they'll say, well, you know, maybe instead of, you know, six-point-nine feet, put it back at least ten feet, or something like that happens. In this case, the applicant is sort of up against the wall in terms of getting this on the schedule to be constructed this year, is my understanding, and so I explained to the applicant what kind of the, the risk is of proceeding in this way, that this, you know, if, if, if the ZDA, which is the City Council, doesn't approve the exact variance that they want, that's going to trigger this coming back here in July for kind of a re-review of a modified site plan that compiles with the, that, that compiles with the variance. So, they were willing to accept that risk, and so here we are. So, if the planning commission is inclined to approve the site plan tonight as it's proposed, that would be expressly contingent upon them obtaining the decided variance that they've applied for, and it'll be scheduled for public hearing, it'll be entertained at the next council meeting, it'll be confirmed. So, procedurally, that's kind of where we are, so it's, you know, if everything goes according to the way that the applicants would like it to go, you won't be seeing this again, they would obtain their variance next week, and everything would go fine. If there's, something happens at the council level that, you know, requires them to modify their site plan, then we'll see them again in July, and then that's when you would be able to approve the plan, or that might, you know, alter the, the construction schedule for them for, for the summer, and, you know, we'll kind of just kind of have to go where it goes, but that's kind of the reason why we're doing this sort of backwards from how we would ordinarily do it procedurally. It's not something where we're doing anything that's, you know, horribly out of practice, it's just typically not, typically an unnecessary risk for an applicant to pursue something like this, but since they're willing to accept that, that risk, then that's something that we can take care of. So, that is the backdrop. We did go through the site plan, other than that fifty-foot setback, which they clearly and obviously don't meet, because they've asked for a variance for it, they meet the other standards of the zoning ordinance. One thing that I will say that I didn't catch in my review, as I wrote in here, that they are not proposing any new parking, they are, they currently have twenty-one spaces, they're moving that down to the south, and they're actually adding three, so they're...
It was on, it was on the plans here.
Yeah. So, they're going to, they're adding three spaces, they're being relocated down to the south, the parking, it's a small little parking area off of Broadway, they've got some trees planted in front there that comply with landscaping requirements, so I don't have any, any concerns in terms of parking, but I just wanted to point out that in our, you know, in our staff report, that was something where we, we didn't catch that they had, they're basically replacing their current parking with, you know, same thing plus three spaces, they're moving it down to the south a little bit, still on, on, on the same property, so it is not of significant concern to us. As far as landscaping goes, they're taking out a couple trees that are where that parking lot currently is, where the proposed mill building and silos will be constructed, but they're leaving four of them, a couple smaller trees, and then the parking area down in the south, they're adding, um, eight more trees and a, and a bunch of shrubs in there, which exceeds the landscaping requirements, so if you're zoning, so we can, you know, we can, there. And they've done a good job of meeting those standards and taking that parking lot to the rest of the site. So, this is a site plan review, not a special land use, so we only need to review the standards of section eighteen point oh-six. So, as Q and Q, Mr. Chairman, we'll go through all six of those, and then, which you can determine whether or not those six have been satisfying, and then we can proceed to a motion of some sort, if that's my desire. So, standard A, the proposed uses will not adversely affect the public health, safety and welfare. Uses and structures will be planned to take into account the five or three sizes of property, et cetera, and the site will be developed so as not to be normal and orderly development for improvement of starting property. This is a, you know, kind of interesting site, because King Milling owns everything around it, so if it's going to impede the development of starting property, they're competing with the development of their own property, which I think for, you know, the purposes of this re-preview, we're going to assume that they take that into account. Otherwise, these are fairly, you know, minor additions to the property, it's not going to be a, you know, huge difference to the overall site, unless you drive back in there, which that area doesn't get a ton of traffic anyways, because they own all of it. So, we don't have any, any concerns with standard A. Standard B, safe, convenient, uncongestion, and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided. So, the pedestrian circulation is not likely to be affected, there's not a lot of pedestrian activity there, there's a sidewalk over, which is good. The truck loadout was in a good spot, because that allows trucks to back up in there, and they won't be sitting in the road, they won't be sitting in the sidewalk, they would back far enough... far enough off of Broadway so as to not make that a significant issue. And then, as far as the parking lot is concerned, that's a very simple, you know, simple design of parking lot, one-way in and out, and setback off the street. It's, you know, very easy to sort of see where, where, where that is, and correctly address is fine. As far as that is concerned as well. Item C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular infestation shall be planned to provide a safer, safer circulation system within the city. There are not any modifications there, except for we note that the location of the driveway for the parking lot is at a good spot, is that lines up directly across from the street that, that connects there, so it makes a logical intersection, it's not a little, you know, weird offset or anything. Otherwise, that standard generally doesn't apply. Similarly, item D, that talks about removal or alteration of significant natural features, being restricted to those areas reasonably necessary to develop the ordinance. The place where the buildings are going are already developed, there's a parking lot where the silos are, are going to go, meaning the property is developed, generally speaking. Landscaping meets, these standards actually get, landscaping exceeds the standards of the ordinance, which is likely to exceed. The planning commission requires that they be continuously maintained to ensure that the uses will be adequately offered for one another in front of property. Again, not an issue here. The planning commission does typically require, and we've suggested the same here, that it maintains all of the landscaping and replace any dead materials and so forth. Item E, satisfactory, satisfactory assurance shall be provided if the codes of the, of the city have been met, which would be addressed as a condition of approval. Last item is that it needs to be generally consistent with the master plan of the city, and this property is always owned in industrial zone, it's planned for industrial uses on the special land use plan. Plan states that areas planned for industrial uses are intended to accommodate continued industrial uses, and so the building, I think, aligns that with continuing long-standing industrial use in the city. And again, the way that they've proposed the site plan, you know, appears that it would satisfy the requirements and recommendations of the plan. Then, there's a final note, which is in our report here, but again, we have engineering staff take a look at this, they would also not have any concerns as far as the layout is, is concerned either, so. We did suggest that the, the planning commission approve the site plan subject to these four conditions, the most notable of which being condition four, which is the approval is expressly contingent upon the applicant obtaining a variance from the board of zoning appeals for the proposed storage building and silos. And where it may be kind of taken in furtherance of this portion of the project until the variance is obtained from the board. So the only part of the project that requires a variance are those silos that front on Broadway. So the truck docks that are on, on, on the north, the parking lot, that's fine. They can start that whenever they want, if that's what they're inclined to do. It's only that part is where the variance exceeds. So you can't do that until the variance is approved. So again, if the, if the ZDA or the VZA, as it is, they approve something different or they require a greater setback for some reason, they would have to come back here in July to have that portion of the site plan re-reviewed. So, are there questions?
Under your recommendations, we usually have checks by the police supplier. Is that part of this?
I just didn't see it. You actually have lots of things to add that. So yeah, we usually have a standard that just says that they have to retain or comply with any requirements of all city departments, and that's something, this is a matter of process, so once these are, when a site plan is approved, there's a process to, to be go through internally, where, you know, Sue sends them to all the departments, and everybody signs off on them, so we'll add that. There's a new condition for comply, I'll write. Those are all these, almost all these, isn't there? Okay, we'll add that, and anything else?
Commissioners, anything else? Any comments from the general public? And I'll close the so-called public hearing, or the open hearing, if, if you would. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion for the site plan review standards for King Milling, the site plan review to accept the six standards. Do I have a second for that?
Will you make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Okay, any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please, for accepting the standards.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. And I would also ask for a motion for the approval of the site plan for King Milling Company additions.
I'll make that motion.
And second?
I'll second.
That is with the conditions noted, correct?
Yes.
With the conditions noted, yes. Any discussion, then? Hearing none. Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck on Monday.
I'll be there.
Staff report, Sue?
I have nothing.
Mike?
I'm working right now with Riverside Cannabis, their, or, they, their order's under control, we believe. They've done a significant amount of upgrades to their facility. We're waiting their final report from their industrial head genesis, making sure that what they do, what, what they're doing will work. But I, I toured the facility about two weeks ago. They, they've done a lot, so I think I would be very shocked. Basically, what, the reasoning why things happened before was it wasn't the filtration system or the scrubbing that they had placed, but there were just, there were holes everywhere throughout that building that they never envisioned. So now, the way they've set it up, they, they redone their whole growing, where they're segregating the growing and basically putting in separate buildings with, with proper filtration, and they're filtrating everything to the back. So I'd be very, I'd be very shocked if we had any more order issues there. Also, I'm working with New Union. They have been, as a zoning enforcement officer, I would inform them that they are in violation of their site plan with their, with their parking right now, so they, they have submitted to us a conceptual sketch of the drawing, you're supposed to get us skilled drawings, which I anticipate we'll get this week. Their goal is to have construction complete when I met with them three weeks ago, within 60 days of that point, so we'll see. But we're, but they are making, they are making efforts, so.
Mike, do you know if the, the grow operation is, is open? And also, what is the place right next door to it?
Which, which grow facility?
In the old Admiral warehouse?
They're still, they're still, they're still under construction.
They have...
They're not in operation yet.
They are not. And the place next to them, it looks like it's awfully close, and I keep seeing...
Joyology, yes. They're supposed to be... We got notice from them last week that they think they'll be open in the next few weeks.
Okay. So neither one is open at that particular point?
No.
So that little house that sits there, they're running that out as a, for a home?
Which house?
The little white house sits there.
At the Admiral? And then I don't know. I, I don't know.
Andy, you say they shouldn't be? Nobody shouldn't be living in there?
No, they should be, they should be allowed.
They have to have anybody living there, so that shouldn't happen.
I'm quite sure that that, so you got, you got the fence or the blue building that's got the new heating and cooling into it, and as you work your way over, you've got that little center building where they used to have the office for the tractors, and you got the little white house between that and New Allo.
I, I know what house you're talking about now. I honestly don't know if they, but their, the ordinance doesn't allow them to do that, so.
Because there's cars up there.
Yeah. We can look at that. And we'll check.
Andy, any remarks?
Nope. I think, yeah, Mike's got it covered, we're working with those two individuals, and otherwise it's just, and I think questions here and there, but otherwise, everything else seems to be moving along this time.
Before I forget it, and I have written all, so it would be easy to do. So it's June 27th on a Monday?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM at Lowell Township, we have our joint session. It's 7 o'clock, the three planning commissioners. Mike, certainly would like to invite you and anybody else on the city council that would like to sit in. They, they usually are fairly brief meetings, an hour, hour and a half, maybe at most, but it's certainly helpful to have everybody there, especially with the joint projects possible. With them particularly, and I'm not sure about Virgens, but certainly Lowell.
Or is it at Virgens Township or...
It is at Virgens Township, yep. 7:00 PM.
It's at Lowell Township.
It's at Lowell Township?
Lowell Township, yeah. Is that what I said? Did I say it's at your... Oh, I'm sorry, Lowell Township, yes. Sorry. Yeah. Oh, that's it. Oh, I thought it was unrelated to... Okay. Okay, sorry. Found it. Anything?
Uh, no, just...
Flower milling isn't a fad.
That's my joke in dinner this morning. It's just a fad.
Another data joke.
600-year-old. Things have run a lot longer than that.
Marty?
I would just like to thank Sue for Monday night. We had a council member that sits here, and she was shivering like a leaf.
Oh.
Sue went downstairs and brought her up a blanket or whatever it was, and I'm like, "Are you warm now?" She goes, "Yeah, now I'm sweating." So, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Come in.
I'm open.
And I'm good, because I remembered what I was supposed to remember, and I would take a motion for adjournment.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please stand adjourned.